Good evening, everyone. I'm Assistant Mayor Tom Farini here this evening for a work session of the Portsmouth City Council. And Mayor Marchand has asked me to pass along that he is caught in traffic and expects to be here shortly. I'll briefly take you through this evening's agenda. This evening, we have two presentations during this work session as a result of council discussions and curiosity in the community and a desire to further orient ourselves with regard to what the Fire Commission and Police Commission undertake for their duties. And so first, we will have a presentation from the Fire Commission from 6:30 to 7:00 with an opportunity for questions and discussions. The Police Commission, we would like to begin at 7:00 and again with an opportunity for questions and discussions. And then we would adjourn. And before I turn it over to the Chair of the Fire Commission, I would just add that the mayor saw it as a result of questions asked by various councilors to seek to answer two questions, to discuss two questions this evening. One would be, is your commission for advocacy or oversight? And the second question is, what value does the commission provide to the city of Portsmouth and its citizens? And with that, I would be happy to turn it over to the Chairman of the Fire Commission. And if you want to proceed, please do.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor Farini. Appreciate the time here.
That would be Mr. Gamester, because I couldn't quite remember who was the Chair, so I didn't want to speak out of turn.
Well, guess what? The Chair is Paul Wentworth.
Okay, Paul, but Mr. Gamester's going to present?
Yes, he is.
All right.
But he said to me, why don't you present?
All right, James. Thank you very much.
Someday, somewhere along the line. We're asked here this evening, and I just needed to have a brief opening statement to kind of set the stage a little bit. And we, as members of local government, you city councilors, us Fire Commissioners, and the gentleman behind me is Police Commissioners. In general, we have seen good councils and not-so-good councils. And we have seen good board members, and we have seen not-so-good board members. But most of all, we have seen good city managers and not very good city managers. Today, we have a pretty good council. But even more than that, we have an excellent city manager. He is the person that you folks depend on to provide you with the best possible information to make any decision that you have before you. With his implementation of a true capital improvement plan, we have been able to replace and renew our equipment from engines to ladders to trucks to ambulances to air packs to hoses, radios, and other items that are solely needed to perform our task. With this being said, what happens when you don't have John Bohenko as your city manager? Remember, I stated, good city managers and bad city managers. And that is the reason why the Portsmouth Board of Fire Commission was established. We had a manager at that time, back in '88, '89, that didn't think much or care about the Fire Department. And the department and the taxpayers were put at serious risk. And I ask again, what happens when you lose this manager? When we have a problem beyond our control, that means the commission's control and the chief's control, the first person to be notified is John Bohenko. It is imperative that he be kept abreast of anything that will affect the city, the budget, and/or the personnel. Now, that doesn't mean we always have congenial meetings with the manager, as some of you might know. But if we're doing our job and he's doing his, then there may not be that congeniality at the initial meeting, but we always seem to work it out somehow. The Portsmouth Fire Commission seems to get lost in the general scheme of the overall city government. And for that reason, and one of the only reasons is, you only hear from us at the annual budget considerations and when we renegotiate contracts that the council has to look and listen and approve. We handle our business at the fire station, not in the press, and that's the way it shall continue. And I'm ready for your questions.
Well, with that, I think I'll just redirect you back if you care to address it, and certainly if councilors want to go ahead and ask the two questions that are really under consideration tonight at the request of the mayor and other councilors, including Council Dwyer, is, is your commission for advocacy or oversight? And what is it that you provide to the community by doing what it is you do? And you've addressed that in great part with your remarks, but we certainly would like to hear what you think, and then we'll open it up to questions from the council.
I was quite confused when I heard Council Dwyer's question last evening, excuse me, last Monday evening, about advocacy or oversight. And I went home and kind of thought about it, and read the charter that I work under and the charter that you work under. And I believe we're designed somewhat as a Board of Directors of a small corporation that is owned by a much larger corporation, meaning you folks. So in that respect, in the jobs that we do, we are oversight. We do not micromanage the Fire Department. We do manage the people within it. We do other things that Boards of Directors would do. But when the time comes, I am an advocate of the Portsmouth Fire Department, the chief, and all the personnel that are there. When you need, when they need me to step forward, me being us, I apologize, to step forward and fight a battle, I'm the first guy on the line, probably with the first gun drawn. And we do this because of the dual roles that we have. And I find myself weighing that advocacy, oversight, advocacy, oversight. And I find myself in the middle, quite like a lot of politicians, riding the fence. And I know that's a dangerous place to be, but I believe the Charter says, we're an oversight committee. I believe to do my job properly, I have to do both. I have to be an advocate.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Gamester, or Mr. Wentworth, or anyone else? Chief? Council Reynolds?
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Can you, Commissioner Gamester, or Commissioner Wentworth, can you elaborate a little bit more? I hear when you...
Ned, could you bring your microphone up there? We don't want to miss one pearl.
Oh, yeah. No, don't want to do that. When I heard you in your introductory remarks talk about, you took a historical perspective, and you said, we've had good city managers and not-so-good, we've had good councils and not-so-good. What happens when we don't have John Bohenko? I'm reading between the lines, there's an implication there that the Fire Commission came into existence at a time when, and you said directly, that we had a city manager that didn't think much of the Fire Department. And so the commission came into existence at a time when there was a perceived need for an advocacy, for a body that would advocate and sort of represent the Fire Commission. And then by saying, well, we now have John Bohenko, who's an excellent manager, you're implying that, well, we don't need such an advocate anymore. We need to have more of an oversight. And then you go on to say, well, I see part, the role is both, depending on circumstances. Could you just elaborate on, I guess, what are the particular circumstances or ways in which you think advocacy becomes more important? Or what are the ways or the circumstances in which oversight is a more appropriate role for the commission? Just so we can get a better sense of how that balance plays out over the course of, you know, a year or two. Please proceed.
If we found ourselves in the same position that the Fire, excuse me, that the Fire Department did 20, almost 20 years ago, we would not be in the position that we're in today. We are a well-trained, well-staffed, well-managed, well-equipped body. And that's not just because of these three commissioners. That is because we have people in the Fire Service who are willing to be trained, want to be trained, want to work. The morale is excellent, by the way. When I arrived, when I arrived on scene, it was not a place that I wanted to be and thought to myself, why did I take this job? Through the efforts of communication, through the efforts of hiring good people, through the efforts of people like this gentleman to my right, Chris LeClaire and Steve Achilles and Steve Rizwald, we have managed to make this thing a model Fire Department. We have managed to make it a model situation of management. Now, back to the part of oversight. If I have all of those tools, and I have a gentleman that I can go to, like John Bohenko, when I have a problem, we find a way to fix the problem, then oversight is strictly all I have to do. If we find ourselves in the position, I will not mention the name, you folks can check with Bob Sullivan, who that city manager was at the time, that we have, that the Fire, there was no Fire Commission, and it was strictly chief to city manager to council, half of our staff would not get by that city manager. At the same time, we had a bad chief, let me explain that, who just followed along with what that particular city manager wanted. So that there were no checks, there are no balances. Today, there's a check, there's a balance. I can be checked by him, he can be checked by me, John can check us all, and at furthest result, you people can check John and us. So this is a great opportunity to have checks and balances. It's a great opportunity to have democracy at the lowest possible level in the city. It's the Fire Commission. Come talk to me. I don't care who you are, I don't care what the problem is, make an appointment, come through the chief, sit down, we'll answer it, we'll discuss it. If it's beyond our control, we take it to John and go from there. Hopefully, I've answered that, Ned.
Thanks. Council Smith, then Council Dwyer.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamester, in your meetings that you normally have, I'm assuming they're, obviously they're open to the public, do you, at any point in the meeting, have an opportunity for the public to be able to come in and speak? Such as at city council meetings, we have a public, open process to allow three minutes for someone to come in and speak on any subject. Do you have that in your covered, your current standard procedure for having your monthly meetings? And if not, is that something you would consider making part of your meetings?
Well, ever since I've been there, Councilor Smith, we have an open meeting. Public is invited, the press has been there, press is invited. And this is probably one of the only commissions or boards, we do have a public comment section under our, under our agenda on every meeting. Even at the budget time, you know, when we go through the budget, we ask everybody. But there are many times that I just look up this fireman in the audience, obviously because they're on duty at Station 1, gentlemen, do you have anything to say? Would you like to add to this, subtract from this? Is there any problems or anything we can do for you? And we stop. You know, we continue. If there's a problem, we continue, and if there's no problem, we do it. Yes, it's very open. Public can speak, press can ask questions. They don't have to wait till after the meeting, they can ask them during the meeting. The only time we go private is personnel issues.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, when we do, if it requires that a union member and/or union members are there because it's a personnel issue, they are invited to that closed meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dwyer.
I'm glad you raised the charter, because, I mean, that's really what we're talking about, I think, is, as we think about the, you know, periodic review of the charter or whether the charter is clear enough. That's what I see tonight really being about. And the really specific duty that's given to the Fire Commission under the charter is related to appointment, appointment, removal, grievance, complaint, appeal. They're really personnel issues at firefighter, lieutenant captain, deputy chief, fire chief level. And so without going into any personnel issues, I don't want you to talk about this with any individuals, but what's your process for, what's your process as outlined by the charter for actually reviewing or making appointments, for looking at personnel, for checking grievances? How does that work? How does the commission get involved? Do you have an independent role with that? You know, frankly, that's why I think this issue is before, it's not because of the Fire Commission, but because of Police Commission issues. But the same kind of charter, the same sort of charter obligations are there, and the same kind of questions would arise to us. So I think one of the things that we'll want to do with the Police Commission is really to find out some of the details of how some of that personnel oversight works. So maybe you could share that as well. Or Chief LeClaire, I see, has his...
Chief?
Thank you. On any personnel matters, and we'll specifically relate this to discipline, not only in the working agreements is there a mention of disciplinary process, but also in the standard operating procedures of the department, the disciplinary policies and the disciplinary steps, it's called progressive discipline, is laid out in specific detail. And it mirrors the contracts, and what that does is it puts everybody in the same playing field. I know what steps I have to take to appropriately discipline somebody. This is where it starts with either the company officer or the assistant chief, and then to myself. And they know what to expect, what's going to happen to them in disciplinary process. And it's progressive discipline to where the small infraction might be corrective counseling and then a written reprimand, and then perhaps a suspension, paid or unpaid. And I, as the chief, can suspend somebody with pay. And then my action is reviewed at the next commission meeting, as the commission is the disciplinary policy that can then suspend that person without pay. I don't have that authority to do so. So with the process being mirrored both in the contracts and policies, it's very, very clear, and it's very, very progressive, and it's a very, very fair process, and everybody gets due process.
So the review, the review point, the trigger for the review point is a suspension. That's when you, the commission, anything below that...
Well, even if it was a disciplinary process, a disciplinary action or step that the union didn't agree with, they have the grievance process to go through. And the grievance, of course, comes back to the chief. And if I deny it, then it goes to the commission, and the commission can make a decision on it. So there's checks and balances there as to whether or not I'm dishing out the correct discipline, or it's progressive discipline, that's the proper discipline for the infraction.
Council White House.
Mr. Gamester, first of all, I'm going to just make a statement, and then I'm going to ask a question. I just want to apologize, as a city councilor, as an elected official, and as a member of the governing body of this city, apologize for having you here. I don't think you have to defend your commission. I know what value you have. I was a member of the 1987, 1988 city council. I know the conflict, I know what took place between the city manager and unions and the executive board and the police department. So as a member of the charter commission in 1986, Joanne Grasso and I, we was on that commission, and we had many, many public hearings, and we found that setting up and establishing a Fire Commission was the best way to go. And I think it has proven itself. And the question I'd like to ask you now, Dick, is, how many cities or communities or towns still rely on a commission for many of their budgeting problems and issues? Because back there during the public hearings in '86, there was a tremendous amount of interest, and that was the avenue to go, to establish either a Fire Commission or a Board of Alteman in a community where there could be a go-between between selectmen, alteman, and city council members.
Why do I, excuse me, Councilman Whitehouse? I apologize for that. I do thank you for your first statement. I cannot give you an answer as to how many Boards of Fire Commissions there are out there. I'm sure there are some. And I'm sure there are some throughout New England from old politics, that there would be Boards of Commissions, of Fire Marshals, of Commission, you know, all sorts of contemporary type names would be added to these things. But you and Joanne were there, Bob Sullivan was there. So at a break, you people can discuss with those who were not here, why we were established, and give them a good, a good go-around for what it was. And I thank you. But Council Dwyer, you asked me a question, I really would like to answer it. The very first statement in our establishment of the Fire Commission says, "The Fire Department of the city of Portsmouth shall be placed under the direct authority of the Board of Fire Commissioners, who shall administer the Fire Department as a municipal chartered department." That is our role. We are involved, as Chris said, in the discipline, we are involved in the hiring, we are involved in how many people, once, once, we decide what we need, come to you, if we need additional personnel, that there shall be X number of uniformed personnel on duty, or excuse me, not on duty, but on the payroll. We bring those items forward to you. We do the, lost my notes, can you just be patient a second? We do the negotiating of the firefighters' contracts, the officers' contracts, the three white shirts that we have have individual contracts. I've been involved in seven separate negotiations, all successful, we all still speak, something worked out well. And the one thing that we probably haven't mentioned is that every meeting, which we meet once a month, plus all budget items as scheduled by you folks, we have to work on, at least once a month, and sometimes other times, if items come up that need our attention. But what the heck was I going to say? I forgot my train of thought there.
If it comes back to you, we'll let you pipe up. This is an informal meeting. I first saw Council Grasso, then Council Penelakis.
Thank you. Dick, you probably have already touched on this, but to the viewing audience, how would you explain, how does the, how does the commission better serve the people of the city in relation to the Fire Department than not having the commission?
Very, very good question. And without, without the Fire Department, the Fire Commission, we are another level of democracy, at the lowest level in this town, if I mention it, it goes from us to you folks. So at the level we stand, and the amount of meetings we have, the public is invited to come in and ask questions, the public is invited to write to us and ask questions, the public is invited to do whatever it is to find out information via the website, via emailing, via standing there and asking a certain question. So it's another way for the public to be introduced to what a department does with its $7 million a year that you give us. If we were not there, would they be able to get a hold of John Bohenko and/or his designee to take care of this job? It would be another layer for John, and another layer, once John handled the problem, to bring it to you folks. You are already overloaded with your meetings that I've seen. John is already overloaded with the tremendous amount of work that he does preparing this city and you people for your meetings. So we've just taken off the backs of you folks a load. And if you had to hire somebody, just, or even pay somebody a little bit extra, it would be a heck of a lot less to keep us on board, because you know how much we make. We find it to be the lowest level of democracy that would absolutely be gone. And I just want you to look around this room, I have not yet, how many people are here to listen to the Fire Commission? Is there anybody behind me? Well, then guess what? If you can't count, you haven't seen anybody go over six yet, so that's what I'm talking about. We must be doing something right. People are, they're informed. We try to keep them informed. We try to keep the chief out in public, outgoing places, being parts of places. We try to have the firemen go downtown in the evening, take that new $400,000 truck, park it where the public can see what they spent, answer questions asked, let the kids sit in it, let everything happen. We encourage everything to have the Fire Department be out there, because we're the lone soul out here. And by the way, they only think about the Fire Department when they need us. And I want you folks to know that they need us 6,000 times per year. Now, think about that number. 6,000 times per year, the phone rings, we go to do something. Now, that's not as much as the Police Department, because they have a different service than we do. But that's a lot. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, Christmas, they've been at my house on Christmas for a fire. They did a good job. Did I answer your question? Thank you, John.
All right. And I apologize that my travels back to Portsmouth delayed me, and if I caught in, I believe, Laura, you were next in the queue.
Yeah. Commissioner Gamester, I hope that asking you to come to here tonight wasn't an insult to you, because I didn't think it was an insult. I wanted the people to know that the commission is there, they do the hiring, the firing, they do the buying of the equipment, they are the ones that should be taking any complaints. And it wasn't meant to say that you commissioners were bad or anything else, it was to get across to the people that there is a commission that takes care of the Fire Department, plus a commission that takes care of the police, and that the councilors are only there as a bottom-line figure. We have absolutely nothing to say about them. And I read in the paper, and I've heard other people say to me, why would you down the commissions? I don't think I was downing the commissions. I was just asking them, those at the public out there, could understand what they do, that they are the, you are the Fire Department. You are over the Fire Department, you govern it. If somebody had a complaint, they have all the rights in the world to come to you and explain what they feel about it. And that they, that you do hire and you do fire, and if somebody doesn't get promoted, that they think should get promoted, that you have a reason for it. I mean, that's what mine was. It was never intended to be an insult to anybody. And I, in fact, I was the one, and it wasn't the Fire, the charter commission here that was so anxious about to put a Fire Commission in here. We put a bill into Concorde and then put the pressure on the city of Portsmouth to put the commission in. So I do respect the commissions, but I think that everybody out there needs to know that they are actually over the Fire Department, not John Bohenko, not me as a city councillor, that the Fire Commission is over the Fire Department. And Chris LeClaire is the chief. And I wouldn't in any way insult you by telling you that you weren't doing a good job or anything, because that wasn't what this was meant for. It was meant to get the word out to what we, what you do.
Thank you. And I know you know I don't have a rug to sweep anything under.
Nope. But I don't want you to either. We had one.
I thought about it a year. Just remembered, if I may, Assistant Mayor, one of the most important things that we do at our weekly, monthly meetings is that we go over the budget. The budget is handed to us, whether it be red or black, with an explanation from the chief as to why it's red, why it's black, you know, vacations, we've got this coming in, that coming in, this happened, we had three fires, we had a little bit of overtime. So we're always asking the question, why, what, when, how's it get straightened out, and are we going to have a problem? And it's always, it's always a roller coaster ride as to the budget. It's up, and then the next month, it's black, and then it's red, then it's black, and I apologize. apologize. So hopefully, at the end of the 12-month period, we're giving money back. That was, you missed that, because I forgot my.
I had said, Dick had said that he had something else that he couldn't remember that he wanted to say in response to his question.
And it was money. And it was money.
I do have a question, Tom, and then Chris. You know, since the civics of this is that the fire commission stands in the shoes of the city manager within the executive branch of government, just to be clear, that's my understanding, certainly if the city attorney cared to correct me, I'd be happy to listen. But my understanding is that it is not like a separately-elected school board, and that it stands in the shoes of the executive branch in place of the city manager. And I understand that and why. I guess my question is, how do you see the fire commission's role in that civics framework? It's a fun question. Advocating for the city in union negotiations to ensure that the city gets the best shake? Where do you see your role in that as a fire commission, union negotiations?
Well, you have heard me say, and I think this is probably where it comes from, I have a hard time giving somebody something and then taking it back next time around. I have a hard time asking a man to do something for less than he received last week for doing the same job. I have a very hard time asking a man, "Go get trained. I'm not paying you for it. Get another, get your paramedics license. I'm not going to pay you for it, but I want you to have it." I'm a believer that if you are willing to stand up and do the right things, I'm going to find a way to pay you for that. Now, I have found myself on the opposite side of the table. I'm supposed to be negotiating with the union, and I'm negotiating against the city when I think the city's wrong. That's the best, some of the battles I've had. I must be right, we're all here, we're all doing the same thing. I must be right in my focus, in other words, whether I extended it properly, maybe another question. I find myself, I have to, I'm a taxpayer here, as everybody in the room is. I worry about my taxes, I worry about my sisters and my friends and my whole street. But I also have 60-some-odd people who've got to live. They've got to live. They can't have eight jobs. They can't have a fireman coming to work tired because he had to take another job. He deserves to get a fair pay for a fair job, a job well done. And I'm sorry, if I have to be an advocate, I'm going to be one. If I have to be an oversight man, I'm going to be one. Wherever I find myself, I will be in the middle there.
Okay, Chris?
So at the risk of insulting both you and Laura, let me ask two questions. The, because I want to, I think, I want to push back on this. I mean, as the way I see it, we've got a charter review coming up sooner or later, and later is only two years from now. So we've got two years to have the general public here basically, you know, agree with what you're saying and see the value of a fire commission, or say, "Why do we need it?" And so first question is to kind of push back a little on what I thought was a very good answer to Joanne, but then it occurred to me, how is that really different than like a rec department? Because we also want people in the city to be able to express, you know, what they think about the operation of the rec department, or whether they were fairly treated, or, you know, whether the employees are getting a fair shake. And yet, we don't treat that as a commission, and I could give other examples too. So I think there's an answer to this, but I'd just like to hear you articulate, what's the difference between why you would want an elected fire commission with these separate powers compared to like a recreation commission?
Well, we happen to be here under charter, so it exists.
Right.
And if you have a problem, let's assume you're not a city counselor and you don't know where to go, you have a place to come. You can call me.
But more people have problems with like dogs than they do with fire. So why would you, why would we not want to have a separately-elected, and I'm not advocating for this, believe me, but why would we, why, what's the difference there?
Well, I don't know the problems that exist with that, but I do know that we're public safety. We're probably, we probably are four or five steps higher than the problems that they may have. What we do for a living, or these gentlemen behind me do for a living, is very important. We save lives, we save property, we save taxable property, by the way. It'd be looking awful bad if it looked like Chelsea did 35 years ago, just bare and not taxable. But our job is public safety. I think it's very important. I think it's important for people to be able to come to us and say what they need to do, what they need.
And so, given that, you would argue that it's more important then for the public to have a place to put forth their issues, complaints, concerns about public safety, rather than because of its importance, having it be more part of the core of what the council looks over and what the city manager looks over?
I think I answered that question in the very beginning. I think, I think with the job that we do, takes a lot off the backs of John's staff and the city council. And it's very, if you added all of what we do, and all of what the chief has to discuss, I'm in communications with the chief regularly. If he had to call John every day to ask him a question, it would be like, "Is it the chief again? Tell him I'm out to lunch." But he can call me. He can get a question answered. He can call John too, I'm sure, and get a question answered. But.
Usually emails me.
Or he can use the email. The scenario, the scenario here is, I think that we have a program that works very well. I think it's good for all departments. The job that we do would have to be done by somebody else. Who wants to do that job? Who is John going to give that responsibility to? And then, where is the check and balance if we do not exist? There is no check and balance between this gentleman and whoever that gentleman may be. And I referenced that in the very beginning. He I like and trust and have faith in. The next, the last one I didn't, and the next one I may not. So therefore, he needs me. So does that gentleman need me, and so do you.
That's a great segue to the second part of my question, and maybe this is something that Bob would answer. And this is the line that, in the charter, that has always confused me, where it says, "The commission shall assume all administrative responsibilities, which would otherwise be vested in the city manager under this charter relating to the administration of the fire department." And so, you know, again, I'll use some of my other department analogies, like water or rec or whatever. It feels to me then that the commission is more like a department head, as opposed to an alternate council, so the commission would report to us like Steve Parkinson would or somebody else. And that's the part that, even though you've written memos about this, I have trouble understanding, and I like to kind of get a clear sense of that, because I think that's part of the confusion here, of what our role is supposed to be vis-à-vis your role, and whether you're really more like Steve Parkinson or more like, you know, one of us.
Well, the charter has unavoidable ambiguities. I think an important historical fact is that in a case of both the fire commission and the police commission, the elected commission, the initial drafts of the charter amendments and the impetus for bringing them forward came from employees within the respective departments. Now, with that historical background, as you might expect, the documents are not management-oriented documents. And therefore, you get to the situation that you're talking about. I have been thinking myself about this question of oversight versus advocacy, and I have concluded myself that in both the fire department and the police department, the unavoidable answer is that the commissions perform both functions. And it really has to be decided on a moment-by-moment, case-by-case basis, what they are doing at any given moment in time. And I don't think there's any way around that.
Would you, okay, so to the question of, would you expect that Mr. James, Mr. Wentworth would be more in the Steve Parkinson position, and I apologize to Steve for using that, than the council position? Or would it be, again, is it just, does it vary by case?
I work very extensively with both departments and both commissions, and I see them sometimes moment-to-moment change, from the oversight to the advocacy role. And it's typically something like this. They are oversight while making a decision within the department, but once the decision is made, they're advocacy with respect to the rest of the world as to the correctness of that decision, whether it's a disciplinary matter, whether it's a budget issue, pretty much whatever it is.
I just want to throw a follow-up then, and that would be, and I, again, I don't mean to pick on Steve, but people understand what we mean with Steve Parkinson's role. Is it fair to say then, that if somebody like Steve is participating in the decision-making process about the correct policy, and then there's a certain point where in participation he's helped decide that a policy is the correct one, and then, if he were to have a conversation, say, with John, he would be advocating for that policy to be the right one on behalf of the entire public works department? Is that, is that inaccurate? That would be sort of the pivot point, I suppose, where you could argue, that's where he goes from oversight or decision-making to advocacy for that decision that was made?
It's something like that, and actually, the city manager operates, if you think about this, in a very similar fashion himself. You know, the policy issues in the city are made up here by the counselors. The employees in the city government are down here. All employee issues go to the city manager. The only direct contact with the council, with the graduate employees, is through the city manager. So the manager is exercising oversight authority with respect to everything below that cross. But with respect to everything above that cross, he's advocating often for decisions made for, by his department heads, by his employees, actions taken. Here's why we think we did the right thing when a particular road was paved on a particular day, for example.
Chief, I saw. Yep. I was trying to get a few words in here, if that's okay, without offending anyone. Sometimes it's difficult for me. Well, the, and it goes on what Bob just said, is that the departments in the city go up to John, and John is that contact with the council. I have great respect for John, and I find myself in the position as of, almost like having two bosses, where I answer to the commission, but I play in the sandbox every day with the city manager. And he's been a great advocate for the fire department as far as our infrastructure and the new station and the apparatus and the equipment for the men, and I think he's done a great job. The difference here with the commission and public safety is that by RSA, and I'll have Mike join me here, is that the police chief and the fire chief by state law are responsible for safety of the citizens. So when you get a presentation from me, if there's a council, if the commission comes up in front of the, issue comes up in front of the council, if I think we need 15 people on a shift, if I think this station needs to be open or closed, I will get to the podium and you will get unfiltered, unedited, sometimes good, sometimes bad, remarks from me that aren't going through any one person to say, "Is it okay if I say this? Well, don't say this." And because of that responsibility, because of my oversight of the fire department and my advocacy, and it's funny you ask that question, because you say, "Well, do you see yourself as the fire chief? Where you're working to save every penny for the citizens?" And what I answer is, "No, I see myself as the lead firefighter. There's 61 of us down there, and I'm the lead firefighter, and we're all fighting for the same cause, and we're all trying to accomplish that issue, but we have to make sure that the fire department survives and we get what we need to do the job." I have three elected officials that I answer to, that allow me to do my job. And whether it's John or whether it's another city council, I'm not mothering you to come to the podium to say something to you. You're getting unedited opinions about how I feel about issues. And I hope that helps clear it up a little bit. And with public safety being such a huge responsibility, and a multi-million dollar business in this city, I think the city council deserves that.
And what you're suggesting, and we can ask the police the same, you're suggesting that's unedited vis-à-vis the commission as well, within the same line that we're talking about? I mean, that's another ambiguity, if you want to think of it that way.
Well, the, I see it as the fire commission is the administrative and policy head of the fire department. We understand the city council has budgetary oversight and over the bottom line. However, how many times have you heard a council member say, "Well, we don't have authority to move this line or this line in the fire department. We don't have the authority to move," and you may say it's a bad thing, we say it as a good thing. You imagine too many people in the, moving this and moving that. That's what the city pays me to do, is to administer the fire department under the direction of the commission. Obviously, I don't go to the mic and say anything that they don't already know I'm going to say. But my job as the fire chief is to advocate strongly for the fire department. And like I said, I don't have, other than the elected boards over me, saying, "You can't do this, you can't say that, don't let the council hear this." And to me, that's extremely valuable. The other issue I have to bring up is, the only time that we've had issues with the charter is with the charters and, what did you use, Bob? Ambiguity. In the charter, it states that the fire commission shall appoint such permanent firefighters, lieutenants, captains, deputy chiefs, and a fire chief, and any call firefighters that it may deem necessary. In the fire department, I have an inspector, which we just hired one, a mechanic, a fire alarm superintendent, and an executive assistant. According to the charter, they work for somebody else. As far as I'm concerned, no, they don't. So that's where we, the only place we've ever had confusion is in that line.
I think it's important to talk about one area that we haven't talked about, that's overall financial control of, and the ultimate responsibility of that financial control. The charter, you know, the chiefs do with their commissions manage their budgets, but ultimately, the city manager and the city attorney has a pine to it that I, as a city manager, have the responsibility to look at all the revenues and expenditures for the entire city, including the school department. And so there is, from the city manager's perspective, not getting involved in the day-to-day administrations of police and fire, someone has to have that control to make sure that we do not overexpend, that we do not have problems from a financial standpoint. So technically, I do have the authority to freeze expenditures, police, fire, schools, I have the right to freeze a hiring, but there's, that's a necessity. Somebody has to be able to do that by looking at the entire picture. So for example, if there's a huge, major loss in revenue, I mean, fire commission's not going to know that, police commission's not going to know that, city manager's going to make the decision that, "Well, we have lost X amount of revenue, and if we don't make up those shortfalls, then we're going to have some real problems in the city." So that's where my role comes in. I provide you with monthly financial reports in accordance with the charter. So I think it's important for the public to understand, there is one entity and one individual that has the authority to watch over the revenues and expenditures of the city and make determinations. I believe that probably was only one time in the last 10 years that I froze expenditures in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. Typically, what we'll do is, we'll meet with the fire chief and commission if they choose, police chief and commission if they choose, finance director, and we'll go through, and as we get into the fourth quarter, we'll determine if there's some weaknesses in their budget and try to make sure that we have a game plan to make that up if we have to. So I think it's important for the public to know that it's not multiple budgets out there with really no one authority. The other thing I think's important is that, over the last few years, what we've tried to do, even though the commissions are existing, we've tried to streamline operations, again, for the public's benefit. We have an IT department. We don't have an IT department for the police department or the fire department. We work together. In fact, the charter speaks specifically to that. We have a human resource department. Again, the charter speaks specifically to that. We have a city negotiator that crosses all lines. So what I think is important, what I'd like the public to get out of this tonight, is, yes, the fire and police commissions do have their oversight over the sworn officers, be it police or fire, but there are a lot of economies of scale that we take advantage of, you know, we don't, purchasing, all those things are one. Purchasing's one, and the issue of IT and the website, and everything tries to be one so that we don't have a fracture. And so from that perspective, I think we've been successful. It takes a lot of cooperation among the departments, and I think the police and fire are extremely cooperative. And so from that perspective, those areas are, we're able to work on. With regards to the sworn officers, well, that's their responsibility. But I thought I'd like to just make that clear.
Any other questions? If not, and I apologize, I don't think this was asked earlier, but I'll just ask, and I'll ask the police the same. A question that I get asked is, as members of the city council, there's usually members of the city council, there's usually a fair amount of competition for the seats, and that's as it should be. Usually, many more people run than there are seats available in any election. And what I've been asked, there are different good answers to it, is why is there typically not the same level of competition, that is, interest, competition, whatever term you want to use, for seats on the commissions? Because at least in the recent past, that's been the case. And indeed, I think one of the things that helps keep us best on our toes is the fact that there's always an election coming up, and there's usually some competition. If you don't do your job, there'll probably be somebody ready to take that, take your place on the city council. So, a question that I'm asked, and I'd ask both commissions this evening, is why do you think there isn't necessarily that much active competition when there are seats available for either commission?
Pretty good, pretty good question, but I think I got a pretty good answer.
Okay.
If Mr. John Citizen is sitting at home and finds out that a department is doing okay, he'll leave that to somebody else. He will absolutely leave that work to somebody else. Very few volunteers out here. You notice out of 21,000 people, you may have 17 running for your nine seats. That's not a big percentage. So, if we're doing a good job, and we're below always the firing line, in other words, not, nobody's complaining, they're saying, "Hey, let Games to handle it. Let Wentworth handle it. Let them do that." We're not going to do it. If there was a huge problem, you'd probably find 30 people signing up, what's it, a couple of weeks from now, and putting their $5 on the line. That's all I can think of. One is their problem, and two is, we might be doing a good job.
Very good. Any other questions? All right. Well, really appreciate representation from the commission and the department being here this evening. We'll take a very brief, literally, like, don't leave the room kind of thing unless you must, for about two minutes, allow the exchange from fire to police, and then recommence. Thanks. Very good. We are back for the second portion of this work session. If you missed it, we just completed a conversation with the representation from the fire department and commission. Going to do the same with members of the police department and commission. I appreciate the chief, deputy chief, and members of the police commission being here. And basically, I'd like to just open it up similar to how we opened up the fire portion, with a couple of questions that are open-ended to get that discussion started. And the two questions, broadly speaking, are as follows. One would be, what role, do you see yourself as more of an advocate or an overseer? Or, as you heard, perhaps in combination of the two. Would like to hear response about that. And the second would be, in terms of the value-added role of the commission. That is, what responsibilities would, what things would not be done at all or as well if the police commission did not exist? Basically, the value that's added through the presence, the existence of a police commission. So, I'll start with those two open-ended questions, and then we'll conduct a similar format as we did a few minutes ago. Whoever wants to jump in and start off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager Bohenco, and Attorney Sullivan. Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. With me are the two commissioners, Commissioner Russo, as well as Commissioner Howe. We have a program set up, Mayor, that, would you like us to answer those questions first? Is that the way you would like to proceed?
Well, if you have some prepared remarks or a program, go with that, and I'm sure if there are additional questions that along those lines, we'll just go down that way. So, yeah, feel free.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to first present Commissioner Russo, who's going to give a brief history of the commission, how it originated, where it is today, just for background for our people at home, as well as ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The origin and duties of the Portsmouth Police Commission. Before the formation of the Portsmouth Police Commission, the authority to appoint and remove a city marshal and assistants, constables, and all other police officers was expressly conferred upon the mayor and alderman by the Portsmouth City Charter, the laws of 1849. It was not uncommon under this agreement for public employees, including police officers, to lose their position each time there was a change of administration. In an attempt to address this problem and to add stability to law enforcement in cities, including Portsmouth, the New Hampshire Legislature enacted a number of laws between 1893 and 1905, providing for the creation of police commissions in certain cities. And those cities were Manchester, Nashua, the town of Exeter, Berlin, Dover, Somersworth, La Cornea. And that act was based upon the origin, the origin of the Portsmouth Police Commission. They copied what we had done in Portsmouth for the rest of these cities and towns, and I believe most of them still exist. I'm not sure exactly, but most of them do. The act, the act establishing the Portsmouth Police Commission was enacted in 1895. The 1895 Act provided that the powers now possessed by the board of aldermen and the mayor of the city of Portsmouth in relation to the appointment and removal of police officers for said city is provided by the city charter of said city and by the statutes of the state are hereby transferred to the board of police commissioners, and shall from and after taking effect of this act be exercised only by said board of police commissioners. The act went on to describe the types and numbers of persons to comprise the police force and their compensation, which was $2.50 a day, which I think we commissioners are still on that.
I think it's still the same, yeah.
So are the councils.
Finally, in 1981, the New Hampshire Legislature extended the authority to create police commissions in all towns, and I named the ones that they had done. It shall be the duty of the police commissioners to appoint such personnel, including police officers, staff, constables, and superior officers, as they deem necessary, and to fix such persons' compensations. The importance of this legislative history is that it illustrates a clear legislative intent to establish a separation of powers between police commissions and city councils or the operation of the police department. The policymaking body for the police department in the city of Portsmouth shall be the police commission. However, all matters relating to annual budgets, numbers of sworn personnel, senior officers, employment contracts, labor agreements, must be approved by the city council. The powers. The police commission shall appoint such permanent patrol officers, sergeants, captains, and police chief and deputies as they deem necessary. The commission shall have authority to consider and act upon any complaint and/or employee's grievance brought to it through such procedures. Where the commission determines that to be sufficient cause, the commission may, after a hearing consistent with the requirements of due process, discipline or remove any employee of the police department against whom such complaints have been brought. Appeals from such decisions shall be heard pursuant to such grievances procedures as shall be established by collective bargaining agreements. The commission shall assume all administrative responsibilities, which would otherwise be vested in the city manager under this charter relating to the administration of the police department. I have another brief history. If there was any questions that were a little, you didn't quite understand about it, I can get into it a little deeper if you'd like, or otherwise.
What are your wishes?
Well, that's a pretty good history. I'd say we can move on to another portion of the conversation, unless there are specific questions.
A clarifying question from someone who hasn't been here as long as several other councillors have. He said that the enabling legislation and the establishment of the Portsmouth Police Commission may go back Commission may go back as far as 1895.
1895.
But I know the information we have currently, the current police, the current iteration of the Police Commission.
Ninety-one.
Was established in ninety-two, I think. Police Commission beginning January ninety-two. So, what was the, when did the Police Commission away before that? During what times during the century?
For about a hundred years prior to that date, the Commission, we had a Commission, but it was, members were all appointed by the Governor.
All right.
What really changed was it became an elected.
Was that they were elected. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions dealing with what we've heard already? Otherwise?
Thank you.
Thanks.
The basic responsibilities of the Police Commission, first of all, were an elective body, as you know. They're elected at large. Each member of the Commission serves a period of four years. And there is a stagger in there so that there's usually one or two people up for reelection at a given time. The responsibility is, is vast, and we continue to strive to make sure that public protection is our number-one issue. And of course, that all begins with budget, budget considerations, as well as personnel. Those are the two items that are probably the most important in our, in our life. We, first of all, we had looked for a leader. We went back, following Chief Russ's administration, which was excellent. The department went through a difficult time up to that point, but after, after Brad's administration comes Chief Mike Magnet. And I have to tell you that he has done an outstanding job in delivering the goods for the people of Portsmouth. He is a veteran of twenty-seven years in the department. He holds a master's degree in public administration. He's also a graduate of the one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth session of the prestigious FBI National Academy. He serves on dozens of boards in the state and is highly recognized as a true leader, not only in the department, but within the state itself. As his number-two man is Len DeSessa. Len has been at it since 1984. First started out with Dover, and he moved down here in 1987. He was a captain, and then he, he became commander in the Patrol Division before moving into personnel and training. And when Mike became chief, Len became his deputy. And the two of them do an outstanding job, and I hope you will agree. As far as the budget is concerned, we are ultimately responsible for the preparation of the budget, working with various departments within the Police Department itself. They prepare it, but we are, we've got some good checks and balances. Tom Flygar works very, very well between the, between you, the Council, as well as ourselves. He keeps us on track. He's, he's a guiding light in going through the step-by-step negotiation process. And so, it's a good thing both for the, both for the city, for the Councilors, as well as the Commission. We spend, sometimes it seems, an inordinate amount of time in preparation of things like the budget, but it is so critically important. We were trying to figure out exactly how much time do we spend, the three Commissioners, on an hourly basis over the period of a year? And as close as I can get, it's hundreds of hours, three or four hundred hours a year, are spent by these three gentlemen to come up with answers to things like the budget and promotions and, and the like. We, and I believe strongly in enhancing our communications. I think our communication between Council and ourselves sometimes misses a boat. And I just want to iterate a couple of things that go on that are hopefully informative to you. One is the monthly report, which we give you regarding all personnel, keeping you on track as far as our budget is concerned, updating you with respect to detectives, patrol, sick call, everything you can possibly think about with respect to the Police Department itself. I hope that aspect is helpful to you. One thing that we did, God, it was starting three years ago, we wanted to put together a presentation so that you could come down and access it at your will with some sufficient notice. And you could do it individually, or you could do it collectively. And that was a presentation about the Portsmouth Police Department, what it does, department by department, the budget detail, personnel, and everything that goes into it. We, we had, we had two City Councilors come down and visit us and go through it. I encourage you to investigate that and really look into it, because I think it would be eminently helpful if you got the time, and I know you've got a tremendous demand on your time, but I really think it would be worthwhile if you can, if you could do that. During a recent council meeting, Councilman, Councilor Dwyer brought up the question, which is the subject, I believe, Mayor, of your initial quest this evening. And, and that is this toss between advocacy. And I can only think that, I love my wife, don't misunderstand me, and that's, and that's terrific. But there is oversight on my part, because I get a little huffy sometimes about how much is being spent on clothing. So, there is a, there is a lesson in there. And we, as Dick Gamester said before, you can't avoid doing a little bit of both. When we are advocates, we may strongly be an advocate about something, but by the same token, we can turn around and see the other side of the story. Best example I can give to you off the top of my head at this moment is that we recently had an incident where we appointed a special committee to investigate whether the punishment was appropriate for the offense. And, and that is oversight on our part. While we didn't like what was going on, we heard the hue and the cry from the public, as well as you did and the Mayor did, and we decided to go out with that committee, appoint three people with the help of Attorney Sullivan, and come up with a, with a pretty good product. So, there is, there is advocacy in the sense that we supported the Chief, but there is oversight in the sense that we had to call this committee in and come up with their results, and ultimately, they supported the Chief and his decision. Using that as a segue, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Howe to talk a little bit more about that with some specific examples, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What was said by the Police Commission and Attorney Sullivan is what I've been thinking about advocacy versus oversight. The way the, the Charter has structured management, we provide oversight for the Police Department. That is our primary responsibility. But because there is a level between the department and the Council, you're at a farther distance than we are, so we end up having to advocate on behalf of the department to the Council. Our primary responsibility as far as oversight is budgetary and personnel. Hiring, firing, promoting personnel. As far as discipline, we don't hand out discipline. The Commission does not hand out discipline. The role of the Commission in discipline is to hear a grievance on discipline that is handed out. We are the last administrative remedy internally in the city for a labor or a union grievance. So, the first step is the Deputy Chief, then the Chief, and then it's appealed to the Commission, and we hear that. And that's oversight, because that's a personnel matter. So, it, they're inextricably linked, oversight and advocacy. You can't separate it. As Attorney Sullivan said, he has seen us in oversight developing a policy, and then, like that, we're advocating for that policy, both internally and externally. You know, we advocate for the budget, and we advocate for the policy that we develop. It's not either-or, it's both-and. And many times, we get, you say, okay, let's back up a minute, what's our role in this specific situation? So, we do both, and as you do, as the Council does. You are an oversight body for everything that goes on in this city, but you're also advocates for the City of Portsmouth. And that's the role we find ourselves in, doing oversight for the Police Department and advocating on behalf of the Police Department internally and externally.
Any questions?
Let me start with Tom, and then Ken.
Thank you. But are all personnel matters within the ambit of collective bargaining agreements or not? Are there things that happened in the personnel? There may be a union, a union contract provision which says someone may ask for a grievance, but the grievance that one engages in under a collective bargaining agreement, and someone got reprimanded for doing something, how much overlap is there between the two or not? What is the subset of the other? I'll ask it again. You have union and potential grievance.
Right.
I see the word grievance in the ordinance, okay, in our ordinance. Does that mean a collective bargaining-based grievance that you must deal with? Or is that word grievance inartfully used in our ordinance to engage behavior outside union grievance behavior?
Maybe I should answer that. With the exception of the Chief and the Deputy Chief, everyone, all sworn personnel in the Police Department are in collective bargaining units. Under state law, all collective bargaining agreements must contain a workable grievance procedure. And that's the term, that's the use of the term that Commissioner Howe was talking about.
So, do you engage in decisions regarding personnel that may not include a union grievance component?
We, we engage in promotion. We, when, when we are promoting someone to, either from patrolman to sergeant, sergeant to lieutenant, lieutenant to captain, there is a procedure for doing that that is laid out in the union contract. And we look at the top three candidates. They come, they, they test, they do, you know, their physical tests, their written tests and everything, and then they come before the Commission, and it is the Commission that hears, the oral board, for those people going for promotion.
In a matter of discipline, again, outside the union grievance procedure, if the Chief has to discipline someone for, you know, sleeping on duty or whatever.
Yep.
Do those items of discipline as personnel, confidential personnel matters, get presented to you?
No.
No.
They, it's like, if John disciplines an employee, does it come before the Council?
If I may, many grievances may not reach us. They're handled by the Chief and the Deputy before they, and they're usually of something of little consequence, but it's, it's done very delicately between them. He is the disciplinarian, they are the disciplinarians. If they can't settle it, it goes to grievance and it comes to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I believe Counselor Smith, and then Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. For Chairman Kelly, I'm going to ask the same question that I asked of the Fire Commission, and that is, in your regularly monthly meetings, do you have an open portion that the public can come into your open meetings and, and have an, an open forum to speak on any subject similar to what we have as a City Council? We have an open three minutes where they, they can speak and, you know, pretty much get anything off their chest that they have. Do you have that as part of your regular monthly meeting?
The, the monthly meeting with respect to the public comment session has not been a regular part of our agenda. The way it's been handled in the past is that if, let's say, a, one of the City Councilors is attending the meeting, or certainly the press is there, if they have questions or, or the Councilor has questions, I ask if somebody would like to speak. They will. I, frankly, it was a problem that Commissioner Gamester brought up before. Attendance is not that great, but maybe if we advertise that we should have a public comment session, they're certainly welcome to do so. How productive that might be, I don't know, but if it's, if it's a good valve for the public, we're all ears, obviously.
And we are televising our meetings. Our monthly meetings are televised.
Would it be, could it be something that you can do as, making that as part of your regular monthly meeting and keeping an open communication with the public? I think a lot of times, and one of the things, reason we're now sitting here today, is a lot of people, they have one source of information, and that's from reading in, in the media.
Yeah.
But sometimes coming before a Board or Commission, just to be able to get off whatever's on their minds and on their chest, to, to say what's, you know, what they're thinking, you know, and just starts the line of communication. And I think that could alleviate a lot of the pressures that's out there right now, is to be able to have, be able to allow the public, any citizen, to always be able to come up and just speak on whatever subject at any meeting, if that could be something as part of your, your regular meeting.
I don't disagree with you, Counselor. It's a good suggestion. One thing we've been, we've been doing from time to time, as best we can, is we'll take the meeting to the community. We'll go to a neighborhood meeting. And the neighborhood meetings are, there's a great exchange that goes on in a situation like that, because it really gets down to the heart. There may be a problem over in Brewster Street, which is quite significantly different from the problem in the South End, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll be doing more of that. It's a great way to stay in touch with the people. I think, Mayor, you saw what happened with the, the Brewster Street meeting, even though that was not a police meeting, it showed by attending the neighborhood meetings what can evolve from that. The positive effect from that community over there was overwhelming. Similarly, when we were making the rounds the other night on, on Night Out, I couldn't, I was really suspicious about Deputy DeSessa. I was getting so many compliments about his attendance down there, I thought it was a setup. But his, his getting involved in the South End, and he spent a couple of hours with him at a meeting, was, was just a great payoff, great connection, and they appreciated it so much. So, we'll be doing more of that.
Okay. Counselor?
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Dwyer.
I'm going to pick up on Counselor Farini's question, since so much of this really is about oversight of personnel, as you, as you've said, budget of personnel. And I think one of the questions that may be in the public's mind when they're trying to make an analogy here, is to how this might work in the private sector. And I, I know that may not, that for good reasons is not the appropriate analogy, but you can help distinguish why that isn't. And it's, it's the oversight issues around like personnel, particularly the whole promotion. I'm thinking, like, you know, in, in the case of a private business, even though I fully trust my supervisors who are over people, I do have independent ways, as a corporate owner, of understanding whether somebody is appropriate or not for maybe a promotion or maybe, you know, some bonus or whatever. I don't only rely on my vice presidents in different, in a different office, even though I respect those people tremendously, and I think they do a great job. In certain cases, I might have an independent way of kind of just assuring for myself that we're on the right track here, we're making the right decision. And that, I think, is, is maybe, what I've been hearing from the public is, you know, even if he's absolutely fabulous, and I have no reason to think he isn't, could Chief Magnet always be right? You know, is there any, is the, does personnel oversight allow you to really do personnel oversight in the way that we would in other parts of the life or the world? Or, or are you really limited, as Commissioners, to information that's kind of presented to you?
I don't think so.
No. We, we get information from our vice president and presidents. When we are looking at a promotion, we talk to the ranking officers, we get input from the ranking officers, we get input from the Chief, we get input from the Deputy Chief, but the decision is ours.
Right. But you see, you are able to, because I think that's a question that's out there, you are able to kind of independently seek.
Yes.
Absolutely. We'll debate among ourselves. We won't always agree, and we won't always agree with the Chief or the Deputy and their recommendations.
And we've overturned the Chief twice since I've been a Commissioner.
That's helpful.
Is that, is that helpful?
That is, because I think that's a source of confusion.
And he took it well, Counselor Dwyer.
Ken, I think I saw Counselor Whitehouse, and then Counselor Panakos.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hesitate and keep saying, well, I've been there and done that, but here we go again. You know, I was a- You know, I was a first commissioner elected for a two-year term. I served with two other commissioners. It will never be another two-year term again. I finished last of five, of three commissioners elected. So I found it very educational. I wanted to go in as a commissioner and not be a rubber stamp. And if you talked to the two commissioners that I served with back there in 94, 95, I certainly wasn't a rubber stamp type person. I asked a lot of pertinent questions. I upset the chief many times. But even now, as a city councilor, I attend many of the commission meetings. Especially, as Commissioner Kelly stated, the neighborhood meetings are important, and they're getting a good turnout. And I've never seen Commissioner Kelly refuse any member of the public that wants to speak out, that wants to bring a subject forward, that wants some answers. So, you know, you can read the minutes, but, you know, if you attend some of their meetings and you really see what's going on, you get a better perspective of what the commission is doing and how valuable they are. And believe me, I think, as I said to the fire commissioner, the police commissioner is just as important in this city as any elected body.
Thank you. Counselor Panalakis.
Yes, I just wanted to relate that I wanted this meeting, because I think that the public out there needs to know that the police commission, as well as the fire commission, are over those departments, and that the council really has nothing to do with them. We don't even have any say, except for the bottom line of that. One of the things that hasn't been done and should be done, and I heard Commissioner Kelly say he was gonna do it, was there was no public comment session. And I think that needs to be at every meeting that you go to, because people can ask questions and get answered for it, answers for it. But I wanted to express to the, by this meeting, that everyone should know that the police commission hires, fires, is the head or administrators of the police department. And that, yes, you can tell the councilor about something, but you should go to the police commission and tell them what you feel, what your feelings are. And I believe that needs to be done. And it sometimes gets very complicated when things get going. And I hope that in the future, three minutes is three minutes. And sometimes it turns into 43 minutes at a council meeting, but it at least gives the public a chance to say what they've got on their chest and to you. And I think there would be more people come to the meetings if they could do that.
Counselor Panalakis, agree with you completely. I'd love to see people come in and ask very pertinent questions. It would be very helpful to us, and very helpful to you, I'm sure. My problem is I haven't been able to generate an audience out there. I don't, it's something to do with Jerry's neckties or what it might be, but the attendance has been spartan. But I would encourage them to come, and I think it would be helpful all the way around.
Mr. Chairman, the only time we had a large audience for one of our meetings was at the high school. It was a captive audience, they had to be there. And they asked some very, very interesting questions.
Good meeting.
It was a very good meeting.
But I think that was the reason for this meeting tonight, to set forth that that's what, there is actually four different entities in this city. There's the city council, the school board, a police commission, and a fire commission.
Right.
And I think that people out there need to realize that we're separated. We're all elected, but we're separated. And that they, when they do have an opinion, it should come to the police commission, or if they have a problem with the fire department, it should go to the fire department, just like if they have a problem, they go to the councilors of John Bohinko. And I just feel that's very important to the public out there.
But I would also like to say, Counselor Panalakis, that in my six years being on the commission, we are separate, but I think we work together quite well. Because we have the same thing on our minds, and that's the welfare of the city and the welfare of the residents.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just, what I'm saying is that people do not understand that the council doesn't have full control of the police department. Or they don't understand that we don't have full control of the fire department, or we don't have full control of the school board.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yeah, but let me say the obvious. Police are in a different position than other people. And I don't, and it's not surprising that people aren't lining up to, like, make comments to the police. It just sort of goes with the territory.
I understand.
And so I think that that poses a challenge. I mean, I understand that that poses a challenge and this sort of authentic conversation, which we may feel happens in other cases. It's gonna be harder, always, for members of the general public to have it with the police department. And therefore, I think it probably adds a particular responsibility to try to figure out ways to do that. And I think going out to the neighborhoods is a great way to do that. I think that, you know, that really shows a way to do that, because that breaks down those barriers. It's, it's just not, not the same. And, you know, this is really all about power, and where power is exercised, and where power is exercised appropriately, and what people do when they feel power is not exercised appropriately. And that's really hard with the people who wear guns, to communicate that power has not been exercised appropriately. And that's what I think, that's what I think we're all about here. And the challenge is how the public communicates that they feel power is not exercised appropriately, especially with, like, a four-year term. That's really hard. And so then it builds up, you know, and I think frankly, that's part of what we've seen here, that people don't have good ways of expressing when they were ticked off about this or when they thought that was inappropriate, or they thought, you know, this was too much power here, or whatever. We have, there's no real sort of safety valve for that within the public safety realm. So I guess that's a question I would, I pose maybe to all of us. So what is the appropriate recourse for the public? It shouldn't be in the newspaper. It really shouldn't. We should have other ways of doing that.
Counselor Dwyer, my immediate answer to that is something that the chief and the deputy have been very insistent upon with respect to training. And that is, community policing is really where it's at. And community policing is getting out of the car, walking in a neighborhood, or walking downtown, maybe taking off the threatening sunglasses and maybe their hat, engaging in a conversation with young people, and just being better officer-friendly. And that goes a long way.
And I think we need the version of that for the commission. I think we need community commission policing, or community police commissioning, or whatever, because we need to do the same, that at all levels of that. And I think that's what Counselor Panalakis has been talking about, Counselor Smith, that we need that version of that, where the members of the general public also feel that vis-à-vis the commission.
Fine, good point.
Indeed, one thing I would say, I think, in part because of the title, or a counselor, mayor, assistant, whatever it may be, when folks have a concern, often the first place they'll turn to is an elected official on the council. And I do think that, in part, maybe because of the four-year term, which is an interesting component of it, hadn't thought about. And also perhaps some of the nature of the business of policing, people rightly or wrongly may feel it's a little more intimidating to make that call than, say, compared to a school board member. That, I think that's one of the reasons why, I know I and I suspect other councilors in this particular case, get a lot of calls. And one of, I think, our unique responsibilities is because no matter what we do to publicize the other roles, the other commissions, we're still gonna be the first place that many members of the public will think of when they have a concern of any kind. And that's great, that's part of our job. Our job is to assist in that user-friendly interface to that I and the rest of us quickly get the, redirect the person to the person in the best position to help provide the answer, or even help in bringing the folks together. I would argue that the council, I think one place where we did a pretty good job of that, and you mentioned it, Commissioner Kelly, was the Brewster Street situation. I know I and a lot of councilors got a number of letters and phone calls from folks saying, "I'm very frustrated, I want to do something." They were very constructive in the way that they communicated their concerns. And they asked a tremendous question. One of the first questions they asked was, "What would I do if I wanted to express this in a constructive way?" Tremendous, not an automatic question, tremendous question. And myself and others said, "Well, get in contact with some of the members of the police commission, because on these levels of these policy matters, everything I would tell you is gonna be conjecture. It's gonna be, you, these are the folks that are in the best position to give you direct assistance." And indeed, we did, and indeed, you did. And then it goes to the members of the department, who did an excellent job in the meeting we had that you referred to. That's it working well, but as Counselor Dwyer said, such a huge part of government, it's a people business. It's really people that need help or are looking to work together. And it's the user-friendliness of government that is the, I would say, it's the great lubricant that allows the gears to turn more easily. And the better job we do of being as friendly as possible so that people who have a question can get an answer, I think the more easily that people are gonna get their answers. So that's an important part of this. I saw Counselor Smith's hand a moment ago, and then Counselor Grasso.
Thank you. I just wanna, one of the reasons I asked the same question to both the police commission and the fire commission is because it is that public input that is needed. A lot of issues that have been come up, and quite frankly, all the phone calls I've gotten recently on the police commission have been more on the fact of, "Don't abolish the police commission, but how can we get in touch with them?" And it's more, I would really, if we was gonna make, if we were going to make a change to the police, to the city charter, I don't think it would have to go to that extreme. But to have that public comment portion at either the beginning or the end of each commission, fire, and police meetings, so that the public has an opportunity to come in and speak openly and be able to, you know, and really be able to say you've done a great job, or we really have concerns about whatever the situation is. And I'm very encouraged to hear from now both commissions that that will take place and that this will be a regular part. And I think that's the first step, to really allow this communication to come out. I know at any time, anyone can go up to a fireman or a police officer and be able to have good conversations. But to be able to get to the policymakers themselves, be able to get to the two commissions, I think is the positive step that we need.
Counselor Smith, I might answer that. Anytime somebody, any citizen has a concern, they're gonna write the police chief. Now, there's been many letters that the police chief receives, that he brings in to us, and we discuss, Jake Breaks, remember that big issue?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We listen to a lot of people on that, that was resolved. So just because we don't get involved publicly a lot, it goes through the chief, and from him it goes to us. And we've resolved many, many issues, as minute as some of them might be, about speeding in front of my house, or so-and-so leaves his garbage can out. I mean, these things we resolve in non-public sessions before they even get out. And the chief answers, or we answer, by responding by letter, or even a telephone call. We receive these things ourselves, but most of it goes right to the chief, and we discuss these things. We're not a closed corporation, believe me.
But I think in having the three-minute open session at the beginning, I think is another good, another tool in the tool chest to be able to keep that communication line open. And I hope too, that, you know, some of the emails, I know, Mr. Mayor, you had said you received emails and concern with the commissions as well as phone calls. Hopefully, that information is flowing down to the police commission as well, so that they can have that information as well.
Counselor Grasso.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Let's have a free commercial. When do you meet and where? It's gonna be broadcast, so.
Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday night at 7:00. We normally meet in council chambers, it will be televised. We normally meet on Thursdays. So our September meeting will be Thursday, September 13th, at 7:00.
Usually, this yellow sheet is posted outside the police department as you go in the first door, and it's usually out here on the bulletin board as well.
And it's in the paper.
Counselor, you don't get that document?
No.
It's on the website.
It's also on the website, cityofportsmouth.com. For those that.
We provide, we provide the city council a listing every week of all the meetings, of every commission and every board.
And secondly, a suggestion, that I think one of the problems here is communication, and although, you know, we get our packet from the police department, that maybe occasionally, when you're in the broadcast mode in this room, that someone from your department come up and explain what the chief of detectives does, or what the detective departments do, because it, or what the, somebody's, it doesn't have to be every meeting, but occasionally, if the people understood the responsibilities of each department, that it might make the communication easier.
We've been doing some of that, Counselor. We've had department heads come up and explain what they do, how they do it.
I know at Budget Time, we get a nice summary here.
Yeah. But we try, we try to come up with a feature for every meeting, just to make it more interesting and more informative to the public.
The school resource officers, the detectives, the emergency response team.
Especially during your televised.
Yeah, we do that.
We have one at every meeting. We have somebody at every meeting.
There was one, one that was absolutely powerful, and that was the situation where we have a couple of officers who are absolute crackerjacks at cracking child pornography cases. They were involved, as you know, involved in an event down in Texas that they had a great deal to do with, and others. It goes on and on. But it's good suggestion, and we'll keep on doing it.
Okay. Any other questions before we close this portion up? Yes, Counselor?
Before we leave, Your Honor, I dug out the minutes of the charter advisory committee that was established in the year 2000. In their report, many times during the public hearings, the public was recommending increasing the membership on both the fire and the commission. They were suggesting that the city council appoint two advisory people on each commission, so there'd be better communication, not as a voting member, but as a advisory only. So the public thought, back in the year 2000, when the Honorable Mayor appointed this special charter advisory committee, they thought the commissioners were very important, and I still think they are.
May I ask, it's a follow-up. Was there ever any discussion, either in print or just any other form then, of having advisory city council appointed, which I presume these would have been, that would have been voting members?
I think it'd have to be a complete charter change.
It would be a charter change, yeah.
This is a charter amendment, see? You could do that as an amendment. I think I'm right, am I right?
Sure. I don't know where to start. First off, let me start this way. To establish an arrangement such as Counselor Whitehouse first described, which was a counselor or two counselors who basically acted as liaisons between the council and the commissions, that doesn't require anybody to touch the charter at all. That actually doesn't require anything more than the council voting to do it and selecting the people you would want to be the liaisons. With regard to having some or all of the police commissioners or the fire commissioners selected by the city council rather than voted by the population at large, that calls for a charter amendment. An amendment is described as a single change to the charter or any other changes that are mandated by that single change. That could be done. And I might add that Manchester, which as you heard, started out with the same kind of commission that we had 100 years ago, the governor-appointed commission. The city of Manchester, more recently than the creation of our fire commission, the city of Manchester actually amended its charter so that all of its police commissioners are selected by its mayor and Board of Alderman. But it does require a charter change to do that.
Okay, just, you mentioned it, so bring that up.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments before we close this up? I see none. And I, just with the fire, I really appreciate everybody representing the department and the commission being here this evening as well, as well as the council. And I hope that this provides some help, both to us around the table as well as those watching at home. And as a reminder, I know that we've explicitly said that next week we do have a regular council meeting, city council, next Monday, here in this room. And we do have a public comment session. And we have said that will provide ample opportunity as to whether it's in that context or even outside of that existing context, to provide folks an opportunity to respond to what they've heard tonight and their thoughts prior to tonight as well. And we'll specify that between now and next Monday. Please keep that in mind at home. Thanks.
Your Honor, at this time, I would like to make a motion to go into a private session with a non-meeting with council.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, we will do that in the next few minutes. Very good, we will do that in the next few minutes.